We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:30. First, item two.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
A quorum, yes.
Yep.
Adjust agenda, does anybody have any agenda adjustments?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to number three here, citizens. Do we have anybody, anybody on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Item four, consider a request from Charles and Cheryl James, 293 Depot Street, Proctorsville, to extend the length of time by 90 days to remove the newly constructed berm within the river corridor. Did everybody get the letter they sent?
Yes.
They did.
Yes. Okay, so they're requesting more time. I guess it's still pretty wet back there. They have removed the fence. And yeah, they'd like to have a little more time, 90 days, to kind of get their property into compliance. Anybody have any discussion on it?
So in his letter, he references a 90-day extension request, which would be through the end of July, but in his letter, he states that it usually dries in August, but with the summers that we've been having, they're all, they've been pretty wet. You know, you can never really plan on the perfect time to do work outside, especially landscaping projects and stuff. You know, I've seen work already be done at a lot of locations, and when people want to get started right away, I think we had the discussion when we first gave them the initial deadline for them to have the work done. I think we already spoke about this was a very generous timeline we were already giving them. I think we had discussed giving them a deadline before winter, but then we thought, no, let's give them a deadline through winter and somewhat through spring, if I remember right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if anybody else remembers differently.
Was it May, May 30th, maybe?
Yeah. And we thought that that was going to be more than generous. We were, again, we were initially giving them a, had spoken about giving them a deadline before the snow fell, or, you know, end of fall, beginning of winter, but we went ahead and gave them all the way through this May-ish deadline.
Right.
So that's my say on it.
May 30th, June 30th, July 30th, August 30th would be 90, of course, 90 days from May 30th.
If it was the May 30th, I can't remember if it was, would you have to go back, go and look back if it was May 30th?
It was either the 15th or the 30th.
I'll give you an answer.
Great.
But.
Okay.
That's my thought.
They are putting forth a effort to come into compliance.
Yeah, they've removed the fence.
They've removed the fence.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't personally have an issue extending it some.
Nor do I.
Yeah, it's a tough time for everybody, and I know they're going through some tough times possibly, but yeah, that's my take on it. I mean, it's something we should probably vote on once we get some more information. I can't vote, but as chairman, I would be like a tiebreaker.
Yes. The flood really didn't happen because of that little brook behind their property getting full. What caused the flood was the depth of the Black River, causing that water to not be able to enter the Black River, so it started backing up.
Yeah, same thing happened with 20 Mile Stream right there by, at Whitesville.
Yes.
Yeah, same thing happened.
Well, you understand that, most people don't.
Yeah.
On the river, if the river is cresting at a foot above the base elevation of that feeder brook, it's going to, and each, each foot that's higher just causes that water to back up geometrically. And I hope that what they're planning will actually accomplish it without having a hydrologist study the entire.
Right. Go ahead, Rick.
Just for reference, it's, the letter states the town has six months from the date of this letter to comply with the decision and remove the violations as described above. And the letter is dated December 7th, 2023.
So that's.
It may June.
June 7th.
2023, yeah.
Right. I mean, 90 days does put it into September.
It puts it into the first week of September.
Yeah.
So what's.
I wish they were here to tell us why they can't do it.
Well, what's the, what's the second half if they don't do it at this third extension as far as, it's just, what do we, are they found, are they found in non-compliance with, you know, what we've been asked them to do if they come back and they say, we haven't done it yet, and they ask for another extension per se, just hypothetical?
Mm-hmm. I think they would. I don't think they dare.
Well, if you can entertain the hypothetical, is, what's the, is, they're just, they're given a letter of non-compliance, Mr. Chambers, do you know if that's the next step, if they don't meet this next deadline?
There is. There is some stuff that you do through the flood hazard regs, and there is also fines. That's nothing the town has ever done in the past.
Yeah.
To find on a, on a daily basis or anything, but there is that ability. And then, you know, also, one of the bigger things is, it would require a letter going to the state and the National Flood Insurance Program Director of the state, and they would not be eligible for any flood insurance at that property either, so.
And does the select board, are they, do they issue the warnings and the penalties?
I think it comes from me as the administration officer.
Okay.
That being you. Yeah.
I'm all for it, I'm all for if somebody else wants to step up on this one.
Well, really, it's by the.
By the regs.
Well, also by the will of the select board.
Select board, as you said, they adopted these, these rules.
The date is, what was it, July 7?
June.
June 7?
June 7, yeah.
What about 30-day extension from that date?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we should give them some sort of extension. I don't know if 90 days is appropriate.
I don't know either.
But 90 days should put it to, put it to rest for them. Give them plenty of time.
Right.
They are making progress.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We had a situation on the zoning board in Chester where a restaurant was given a list of items that they had to, they had to comply to in order to get a zoning approval. And one of them is that they would not have amplified music, and they had amplified music, and we cited them for violation of their permit, and she went to the select board and cried, and they said, you poor thing, go forth and do what you want, basically. So the, the, the select board, over, in this case, overruled the, the zoning board of authority or the Development Review Board, it was called at that time, of course, we were furious. So what are we, what are we meeting two nights a month for if our, our decisions are able to be turned or revoked by the select board? Then the select board backed down, said, yeah, you're right, we shouldn't have done that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I'm also just thinking of the neighbor aspect, because there was the neighbor dispute that was going on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and they said they were in the process of, they were going to sell or in the process of selling that, you know, the neighbors were going to sell their property, you know, I guess, again, there was some personal stuff that had gone on, and, you know, this is also not just about them, it's, you know, the, the neighbor aspect, you know, when people, not to equate it to a crime, but there needs to, you know, the victim wants some sort of, you know, restitution or some type of kind of that.
Redress.
Redress, yeah. So again, I know that Mr. Chambers had done several site visits and advised them of, you know, what he would not like them to do or change, and they kind of were not very cooperative in, in that aspect, so, you know, there was a little bit of history of, you know, that too, when we're looking at the whole picture of this issue. So I'm, I kind of like Ms. Clark, I mean, I can, I would be okay with giving them another 30 days from the June 7th, which would be August 7th to July 7th. You know, kind of somewhat meeting them halfway, somewhat, yes, they removed the fence, so they did address something, but also, you know, kind of, okay, I don't see, give me the whole 90 day, but let's give them 30 more days of dry out time and things of that nature. And again, we had given them this, to do this back in the fall, so there could have been some sort of, hey, I need, am I going to need equipment to do this? I need to look at planning and hiring and seeing who's available to do this work if I'm going to need someone to come in with heavy machinery to help me with this. So there was last fall that they had all this time to, you know, line up equipment, because that's also stated in the letters, you know, people are, who have equipment to do this work or whatever that they want to hire to do, is, you know, everyone gets booked in the summer.
Right. No, you bring up a good point, they did have all winter to plan this.
Yeah, they had all winter to plan it, but they didn't have all winter to enact the plan.
No.
It was just not feasible, but I'm, I'm all right with that, all right with 30 days. They could always come back.
Mm-hmm.
If they, if they can't do it, they can give us a good indication why it can't be done, and not being able to light up a suitable contractor would be a legitimate reason, they're hard to get.
Because if I remember right, it was they had planted trees above ground kind of thing, erecting a berm, and so we had, we had taken into a respect of the investment in the, you know, trees that they had already purchased, and if they were going to have to uproot those, there was going to be a financial kind of burden on them, you know, but again, that was kind of odd with the way that those were planted and.
Yeah.
The berm that kind of, there was no, you know, gap, there was just one long berm with the trees in the berm and not, nothing in between those trees as far as taking the dirt back down to grade level kind of thing, so I don't know if it was, if it's all that difficult to remove those specific trees the way they planted them, if it requires so much heavy equipment to get the job done, going from remembering the pictures and what they had done.
Yeah, that's really, yeah, we'll have to figure that out. Rick, did you have a?
Well, I just don't want to lose the sight of the fact that there was more to it than just the equipment, the berm, if you make a decision letter. The decision was to remove the berm back to 50 feet, which they were going to uproot the trees and then replant them at grade level. But also part of this was that 50 feet, that stockade, that fence, and they were going to raise 18 inches. So in the decision letter that you can take into consideration is, it doesn't take an estimator to go back there on wet ground either to remove that 18 inches of fence. You know, it, it requires it from the tree and the berm, but you don't have to lump some of that altogether. I just hadn't heard anybody mention about the fence, so I just didn't want to lose sight that that was part of this as well.
Okay. All right.
Can some of the soil be removed between the trees, or space between the trees?
Well, they're planted on top of the berm, they're going to have to take the trees, sit on the side, remove the berm, replant the trees.
Is that what you're talking about, Jerry?
At grade.
Okay, you know more about it in your landscaping business than I do, so.
Good job.
I'll defer to you.
Yeah.
Keep somebody busy for a few days.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seems like we're all okay with 30 days. I don't know, Shannon.
What about you? Would you rather have a longer period of time?
No, they can come back.
Okay.
They can always come back and ask for a longer if they improve stress.
Okay, so we'll need a motion then to.
I assume.
Okay, to extend.
I'll second it.
Okay, extend the deadline to bring 293 Depot Street into compliance by 30 days from.
From June 7.
From June 7. Yep. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. Okay, next on the agenda is to approve meeting minutes from April 10th, and also the energy chapter hearing note, hearing notes, we have to approve. I have a couple copies here, I don't know if.
May I see what he's got?
Just the same one from the February 7th, the second.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody make a motion whenever they're ready?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
But this is for February 7th?
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed, and then we'll go to the April 10th meeting, yeah, that's, anybody wants to make a motion on that when they're ready? It's a nice job, Miguel. You had mentioned there's some grammatical errors, or you want to change them, or?
Some minor grammatical errors, but I don't think it changes any substance or anything too crazy important in there, but I did have a second set of eyes take a look at it for me, just in case I did miss something, but.
The teacher by any chance?
I don't know, I guess I'd make the motion for my own minutes, to approve my own minutes?
You can.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Go on, item six, discussion on the subdivision forum last Wednesday. I thought it went really well, it was good, we had some divergent viewpoints on it, which is good. It was a pretty good attendance, maybe 30 people? 25?
Less than 20, I think.
Less than 20? Well, it seemed like one, huh?
That's about 1% of the population.
1%. Okay, well, then, maybe not so good.
Well, I, I think we still have issue with finding a way to enable the public to be educated on the, on what we're doing. The, from what you said earlier, Miguel, I remember, the select mandated that we address this issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then when we're finished, we send it back and they have an opportunity to review it?
We would have our planning commission hearing, but I would, it would be available for them. So we do our planning commission hearing, and then the planning commission votes whether or not to send it to the select board.
Uh-huh.
And then the select board has their hearing.
So then the public still has another chance to.
All would have, well, they have three chances.
Three chances altogether?
Yes.
To, to make some improvements or comments?
Mm-hmm, they have the planning commission, if, generally, nobody comes to the planning commission hearings for these things. They do come to the select board, and the select board, I mean, they can either send it back to the planning commission, I believe they can vote not, they can vote to have a town-wide vote on it. I don't know if they can not just squash.
So if they don't approve it and they can send it back for revisions?
Yes, they send it back to the planning commission, and I think they can.
I think they can completely squash it.
They can, okay. Yeah, I would imagine they could. So they're basically, there are those two opportunities, and then I'm quite certain if it does go forward, that it will go to a town vote in March. So there are other opportunities.
One thing that I'm concerned about is that this is, this is something that the town of Cavender's residents are not used to.
Right.
Having regulations, but you don't start at the finish line. You know, you, you start where you are, and, and people have an opportunity to make improvements or changes or disagreements or something, but to have it all finished and complete and say, this is a wonderful program, we're going to accept it, that never happens. It's, democracy is messy, and, and you just keep working at it, and so that's my speech.
No, that's well put.
I think the other thing is, I don't know if we had really presented it, you did a great job in the initial introduction, but I don't think we presented the fact that this was an extremely rough draft of this subdivision. I think we spent one hour in one meeting months ago on a few edits in the language.
Well, a couple meetings, I think we went.
Yeah.
It was like three meetings.
I think one was like, we, this is what we, we found, I think this is a copy from another town.
Right.
And then, so we had that, and we kind of timed to overlook it, but I think we really had one meeting, because I found my copy of notes and language that we were looking at and wanting to, you know, change here and there, so, I mean, I think, I don't know if the town thought this was like the final draft, or the, just the people there that were attending thought that this was like, oh yeah, we're done, this is going to, you know, the select board next. I don't know if that was kind of misinterpreted or misunderstood, but this was an extremely rough draft, and I, I think this subdivision regulation is maybe a year out, really, to really send it to the town or the select board because of all the feedback that we got. And there is, there does need to be a lot of changes to language and be very, very cognizant of language and how different people may interpret, may interpret just one word in there. So that's kind of what I wanted to get out from this, is that it was a very rough draft, and this is nowhere near, you know, sending it to the select board, and we welcome all constructive criticism, you know, to this process, to this, and it was good to hear some feedback, good, you know, good feedback, a lot of people kind of stalled the, the, kind of the essence and the, the value in it, and then some people had some real concerns, and it's understandable what those concerns were.
Mm-hmm. I think Shannon, you brought up a good point, just the language with requiring plantings. I think it could be scaled back, but I think it's important to have something like that for like a big subdivision.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it, you can look at it, people are thinking, and the first question was, was in Act 250 handling some of these larger projects that would have to do these things anyway?
That's right.
And I think that little clarity between that would be really helpful for a lot of people. And then the thing I said about the ordinance is for, if we have a driveway ordinance, one of our things is, you know, setbacks in driveways being not the regulation that maybe we need to beef up that instead of having a whole separate, you know, document on it when you already have something already started.
They desperately need to be upgraded. I've kind of looked into it.
You know, the real problem is you don't have anyone to do any.
Well, it's not that, because I do all the driveway permits, which are easy to do, but it's, people are putting out a stake by the road and saying this is where the driveway's going to go. So then you decide what they need, and then you can tell them up to 20 feet, but you're not, they're not even to the point to getting a site plan of where the driveway's going to go after that, so you have no idea about drainage.
Yeah.
That's where this comes in to, you know, it helps with that part of it, because if I, if I was to wait for somebody to have a complete site plan before I said yes or no, it would hold them back too, so.
Is there like, I mean, not saying no to them to put one in, but is there like almost like a follow-up to that? Like, okay, yeah, this is where it's going to go, do I come back afterwards and make sure that the drainage is going where it needs to get, like, part two of it, maybe? I mean, you already have something, so I feel like working with what you already have is probably easier than starting all over.
Yeah, I think, I believe a lot of these access permits are based off the state of Vermont, too. When you go onto 131, you buy a house, you're like.
Right, that's different.
That's all they do is the access. They don't do any of the other drainage on the people, because that falls into the town's issue, not the access, because you're only giving access to go on that road, not necessarily, it doesn't cover everything else. And we've had a couple issues within the last six months of a new lot going in, and you know, it's kind of on a hillside, and then you clear it to make where you're going to put the house, so they needed to put a ditch all the way, well, they put a ditch all the way to the end of their property, and then they drain the water, well, it's draining it into the neighbors' house going down the road, and we have no say over that currently. Just don't. And I don't see how that would fit into the access permit. It's not a driveway ordinance, we don't have that.
Okay, because that's what it's labeled as in this document, is a driveway ordinance. I thought there was something more to it, and it's not on the website, so I couldn't read it to see what it actually was, which I think ties into Shirley's point that you have to be able to educate people, they have to be able to have access to these.
Isn't the driveway ordinance in that book of ordinances?
I was just going to go look.
I think, I think there is one in there.
It's an access.
Along with the junkyard ordinance and the noise ordinance.
Twenty years old.
And I think, and also too, at that point, updating the building permit, because I mean, that is just kind of ridiculous.
Yeah.
Bring it in on a cocktail napkin.
Yeah.
Here's where I want to put the house.
I mean, we could, we could ask questions, you know, getting back to the short-term rentals is like, is this going to be a rental unit, you know, things like that, yes or no? But, and then with Act 250, I mean, they do, any subdivision over five lots, it would go through Act 250, but they also look at, the Act 250 board looks at our subdivision regulations in terms of, does it, does that proposed plan kind of, you know, conform to them? And it gives us a little more local control, whereas if you leave that up to the Act 250 board, they may say no on a subdivision, or yes.
Well, I think the other point was, you know, are the rules the same for, you know, one person who has, you know, family or whatever, they want to split their land out versus a big developer? a big developer who's going to do, you know, a 70 housing unit or something?
Right.
So does this document, is it a one-size-fits-all?
Well, I guess with the minor subdivisions, under four lots or under, I mean, that's pretty simple. I mean, you still have to get a permit, but it wouldn't require a hearing.
But if you had a lot and you wanted to put six in it, and you're still just one person, not necessarily doing a huge development, you have to adhere to the major subdivision regulations.
Right.
Which is not going to be the same as, you know, some big company comes in and builds 70 houses on six lots.
Right.
So...
I mean, six lots is a lot, I mean, kind of a developer, I guess.
Is that kind of, did the subdivision regulations, were they copied from another town, and the kind of the going number is that four? Where was that kind of plucked out from?
We, I think we decided that.
Was that decided in a meeting of ours?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is it four lots with four houses, or is it four lots with 60 residences? I mean, right?
Well...
Well, I think common sense would say, well, if you have four lots and it's one acre, you're not going to put, you know, 10, you know, cabins on it.
No, but you might put a big building that houses four or five different apartments.
You could.
You could, yeah.
It doesn't, yeah, subdivision regulations does not control the use.
Right. And that's where we would even get into, I think, a little bit more of a pushback, is deciding what it's used for. We're just limiting the number of, you know, well, this is a small subdivision with four or less, and this is a large subdivision with four or more. If you want to get into that additional language of what to put on it, I think we already saw that there was enough pushback on that, of what to tell people to do with their property, and that's where the subdivision regulations is kind of addressing, like, you don't want to have property next to you be sold, and that property is, some developer decides to come in and build, you know, a bunch of, you know, like you said, a big unit, you know, we don't have any control over that. It's possible, it could happen anywhere.
But people are also not going to like the fact that their neighbor can dictate what they can do.
Yep.
That's not going to go over well either. You know, if I have four lots that I've paid for and I want to put 20 tiny homes on them, you know, and my neighbor doesn't like it, does that squash it?
You know, I think that might require Act 250, once you get...
Yeah, but if you had 20 tiny, 20 tiny homes going on that lot, each one would have a separate deed.
Yeah.
You know, so, because...
And property boundaries?
Yeah, oh yes.
Right.
So that, that 20-unit subdivision with tiny houses would actually have to go through with Act 250.
Right.
Because it's more than, it's more than four.
But, I'm just saying, like, if I, just me, say for example, I wanted to do it on my land, you know, versus, so maybe I want not 20 tiny homes, maybe I only have four. And then a developer comes in and they want to put in a unit with 70, you know, are the rules the same? And should they be the same?
Well, once they, again, you would, you would want those four tiny homes to have their own, their own lot lines, and number five would bring that to 50, a review, which almost, not almost, pretty much puts it out of our hands. They get their claws into it then.
They'd have to, we'd still, as a criteria, tend as a conform to the town plan.
Yeah.
They'd have to come to us and...
But their, their, their standards for, for driveway drainage and things like that, elevations, slopes, could be more severe than ours. If they determine that it's not a, it's not a good site for a, for a road, they do that.
Mm-hmm.
But still, you know, I said at the last meeting, I'm concerned about getting more of the driveways, like I see on Healed Road that don't even have defined ditches, and when it, when it rained, they became, they became chasms, just washed out into the town road, because they really weren't well-built.
Yeah, everyone with a boulder or doesn't know how to properly build a road.
Oh, it's hard.
I mean, a lot of people try, but...
Right.
We can go back from that. The town can go back, they cannot cause damage to a town road. We have changed a couple on Healed Road, but we don't, we didn't go far back into the property either. It was, you need to move your driveway a little bit this way because it made no sense the way, how they had it.
Yeah.
But it's still limited. We didn't, we didn't take care of any of the water and drainage that's coming into that ditch, just right there, it's meeting the road.
That's a steep, steep hillside.
Yeah.
You know where I mean?
I, I've been up and down the Healed Road a few times, and I've seen some, some washouts.
It's the, it's the lots that are probably just about a half a mile from the intersection with Davis Road, they're all on the right.
Uh-huh.
It's worth, worth driving up and looking.
Now that they're privately owned, how does that get addressed now, after the fact?
Well, Rick said that, in a couple of cases, they've been told to amend their driveways.
So the new property owners have to fix the issue?
Whoever's owning it, yes.
The ones that I, the ones that I talked to already had an access permit in place, but they were not sold to a private, they were, they were still on the...
Well, that was just my question, because, you know, it's the new person's issue is now the issue, even though they didn't book an access permit.
You know, when you buy a home, you expect that there are some standards in building, and the value of the property depends on having well-built structures and well-engineered roads and driveways. That's part of what, that's part of what real estate is all about, is, you know, having things done properly.
Well, Shannon, talking about the hypothetical 40-unit tiny house subdivision, that could actually happen in this town, because we don't have minimum lot size.
Yeah.
You could actually have a lot with a tiny house on it, about the size of this room, that would be allowed.
You'd be really close to your neighbors, but...
Yeah.
There is stuff in the building permit about a minimum amount of road frontage, and this far away from property lines, but that's from the 70s, and there's a lot of places that don't have 100 feet of road frontage in order to build one.
I mean, is that a better place to start? You were talking about updating the building permit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, can some of this kind of be tied into that?
Absolutely. Yeah, it should all be, kind of, the access permit, building permit.
Since you're talking about new building, you're not talking about what already exists.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we'd want to do, is amend the building permit?
Yes.
Instead of worrying about subdivision regulations at this point?
Is that your point?
Well, I'm just saying, does that have more, would that have enough teeth that it's worth the effort to put into that, rather than something that's covering a whole lot of things, when you're saying the major problem is, you know, drainage and access and things like that?
With a building permit, I don't, is it even legal? Can you have setbacks and all that? Doesn't it have to be zoning? I don't know.
That's why, I mean, our building permits are from the 70s.
Yeah, I think they just said, ah, 20 feet, but I think you have to have zoning in order to enforce, like setbacks and uses and all that.
Because you put things in there about drainage and things like that?
You couldn't tie it to the access permit? Well, I guess, I guess you could, but a lot of people get an access permit for, what, I mean, you would need one for a hayfield, you would need one for a woodlot, necessarily doing anything real construction-wise.
But on a building permit?
But on a building permit. Yeah, our, our building permits are too simple. We're just too simple.
I feel that.
Yeah, they're pretty simple.
I mean, and we have people that don't get them. A lot of people don't understand when they, and I mean, it just goes to the education part of it. And not that they don't get them because they're refusing to get them, because they're so simple, they just don't think they need them.
Yeah.
They always hear from everybody, whether it's a realtor or contractor, but Cavendish doesn't have zoning, you don't have to do it, so they don't even come to get a building permit. So that, I mean, there needs to be a lot of education in that as well, which, that's what you start talking about first and redoing those, and then there would be some education out there, and beyond a bunch of agendas, so.
Mm-hmm. And that would be an actual ordinance, building ordinance, I don't know, it would have to be, yeah.
I think so.
Right. Well, I mean, that's certainly a good place to start.
Did I just create a separate problem?
No, no, we've been talking about redoing the, the building permits and the access permits. I've actually kind of started this winter.
Well, also, the town plan is on the long-term goal of 2028.
Right.
You know, and I don't know if we can tackle that building permit also, you know, that's a goal too.
Oh, they're easy, that's not.
You know.
And does, does that play into the town plan as well? Would it give the town plan more, you know, I'm just trying to find some, some way to, instead of like reinventing the wheel, taking what you have, making it better, so that it has a little bit of oomph behind it?
You start teetering on zoning and stuff like that when you really get too in-depth about, about building permits.
With the town plan, since we don't have zoning, it is really detailed, it could probably even be more detailed, but that, it only, it's only used in like Act 250 permit applica, you know, it's not for like, if someone's going to do a four-lot subdivision, or, you know, if they don't need an Act 250 permit, then there's no reason for them to look at the town plan unless they want to, want to?
I think one unfortunate part about like the discussion on the subdivision that gets lost is because everybody reads them and they worry about what they can't do, how their, 50% of that is designed to protect you as a landowner as well. And it's harder to see that aspect of it than it is to see, well, what can I do as you're flipping through it?
Mm-hmm.
I felt that, yeah, I felt that at the forum, that a lot of people thought that it was, be working against people and their personal interest, rather than as a benefit for the town, and in the spirit that it's, that it's, that it's being worked on is a benefit for Cavendish residents as a whole.
The spirit of our town is to be good neighbors.
Be good neighbors, yeah.
Right.
But if there aren't, then you have a guideline, and even though, I mean, let's see, Joe, not Joe.
Jason.
Jason.
Yeah, Jason, was talking about, as far as the policing part, it would probably be somebody not in the town, it would be regional, so you don't have to police your neighbor, so to speak.
I mean, to Shannon's point, the other scary part is, your neighbor could also use that to the extent of, how can I stop them from doing what they want by this document?
Yeah. So are there, in your experience, are there many towns that are successful that don't have a bylaws similar to what this...
There's not a whole lot of towns, there's not a whole lot of towns...
With or without?
...to begin with, zoning to begin with, there's not a lot of, you know, I remember, Bruce?
Yes, it's, in Windsor County, it's Hartland, and then in Rutland County, it's Mount Holly.
Those are the only towns without bylaws for subdivisions?
Nah, it's more zoning.
Without zoning.
Without zoning, okay.
Right, which probably ties into subdivision.
Yeah, addresses at least one of the issues.
You can't have zoning without subdivision regulations.
I don't believe so.
Right.
No, you have to have...
Got to have both. You could just have subdivision. I mean, zoning, I don't know, I mean, zoning can be, can destroy a town too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested in doing zoning because I'm afraid of it. I really don't like...
This is a really quirky town as far as the layout.
Well, we're in a crossroads right now, a lot of people, it's not, it's not everybody, it's family that's lived here for a while, there's a lot of money and people coming in, buying land and houses, and it's changing, it's really changing.
And it will continue, and there'll be less control in the future, as far as if you want to address the issue of safety and washouts and stuff like that.
The issue with zoning is, unless it's really spelled out and detailed, it's not worth having, because you have to really spell everything out, like Woodstock is a perfect example. You know, they have a history, you know, the Rockefellers kind of developed it, and they want their zoning tight. I mean, they control colors and everything, and that's fine for them, but Cavendish, you know, it's kind of...
Different community.
It's, yeah, it's a different community, there's a lot of working families.
Yeah, and a lot of...
There's got to be a way that we can do something to protect the neighbor that's already living there, so they don't get, they don't have the drainage coming onto their property.
That's right.
You know, stuff like that.
And I mean, subdivision kind of does that, I think Bruce said it fosters, or I don't know if compels the right word, good engineering, I mean...
Zoning got its start in the 1920s in New Jersey, and that should tell you something.
I don't know why that's funny, but it is.
I laughed too.
Well, yeah, you have to...
On camera, but I...
I mean, we have, you know, in my neighborhood, you know, we have Fred Gannett, restores antique automobiles, I have my little business, and if we had strict zoning, we'd probably never be able to do it.
There are scores of small businesses up in the hills.
Absolutely. I mean, we're lucky, I mean, either one of us could just, just really ruin their lives, but, because we're pretty close together, but...
We get along.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I don't know, zoning is a tough one. It's, because if it's too loose, then it just gives developers, you know, do whatever you want, kind of.
But there's certain, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's certain thresholds and requirements that if you do a subdivision regulations, I mean, they're almost rubber stamped on what they need to say.
Right, they are, a lot of boilerplate stuff, yeah. All right. Well, I mean, do we push forward and make some revisions, go through it?
Do we have some concrete suggestions on some revisions?
Yes, they're...
Okay.
I had listened to Shannon and also read the text again, and the, the bit about vegetation and...
The trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could...
We could just, that stuff scares people.
Right, no, it scares... Sidewalks in the, in the, we don't even have sidewalks on our town.
Yeah, they call, they, they, they talk about the Act 250 memorial pines, every time an Act 250 is done, they see the one, you know, the plantings of, of trees along the border, and so they mandate white pines if they planted, then they die.
Oh, yeah. Well, there was reason for the measurement and type of trees that were suggested, because if you have a property and somebody builds, puts solar panels right over there, and you can, if you, if that were something mandated to protect a homeowner from, putting a 10-inch pine tree every five feet's not going to do it, but if you specify, like, how to measure it, I mean, there's real thought behind that.
So you cover up the solar panels so the trees don't need to work?
I don't mean covering up the solar panels, I mean covering the view of the solar panels from your home, so...
I mean, I could see it on big subdivisions, where you have, you know, 20, 30 lots, there may need to be some screening.
Yep.
But I think for like a minor, I think you bring up a good point, but it might be getting, it might be too much, I think, to require, I think, getting the.
That's something we could leave out to start with and see if it needs to be put back.
Well, May, I think it does say May.
Says May?
Yeah.
Okay, now, now I remember because it depends, because you had discussed, well, you wouldn't make it happen as this board, but if the board has that power in the future.
It could. I mean.
These flood hazard regulations are in the same situation. They're more designed around large-scale building in floodplains and stuff, not the person putting on a new deck. But problem is when you have those regulations, everybody falls under heat.
I know.
Is that where, with this document, is it's worth looking at, like, your minor, so, and I don't want to make more work by having like two documents, but like your minor subdivisions have these rules or your major ones have more? They have these rules plus maybe some more?
We'd have to ask Jason on that.
Maybe subdivide and maybe having one document and subdividing major, major and minor?
Well, it would be one document, but you'd have separate conditions for a minor.
Thinking that they have to abide by the major instead of the minor?
That's right.
Well, and I think that's like the flood regs, like you're saying, you know, they're, they're meant for something much bigger, but everybody has to do it and then it becomes a hardship for the little person who's trying to put a deck on.
I mean, that's something we could certainly ask Jason, because I think that would.
I'm not sure if it's legal or not.
I don't either. That's right. Yeah, we'll definitely ask him.
You know, yeah, the, the father of modern zoning was Warren Harding. Does anybody remember Warren?
President.
The president, yeah.
Yeah. He was from New Jersey and it was, you know, again, the very early nineteen twenties, teens and twenties, they were starting to build in the suburb, what became suburbs, but at the time was farmland. And he, he decided that there had to be substructure to the, to the, the building of the, of the developments. And never forget, the purpose of zoning is, is, is to protect property values. That's its number one goal.
So maybe in that area, it worked when you were transitioning from farmland.
Yes.
To a center of a town, but it doesn't work in everybody's town.
And it doesn't work, it doesn't always work ten years from now. Because fifteen years ago, or twenty years ago, the state of Vermont was really trying to curb and crawl. They didn't want all this stuff going. And now they're all saying, we need a lot of land. We need more housing somewhere.
Yes.
We need to go out there. And, you know, so what worked fifteen years ago is not working anymore.
Is it possible to do a subdivision on some of the big spaces up about twenty-mile stream? Is it possible to put in a bunch of homes up in that region?
Oh, up like in the fields?
I think a lot of that would.
Pardon?
A lot of that depends on how big of a subdivision, because a lot of that's going to depend on your water.
Say twenty homes?
Your state water and sewer permit. Is each, is each house going to have its own well and septic? Are they going to have a community one, that type of thing, so?
It's a lot of questions to be answered first, yeah, if someone sees, oh, that looks.
Those are already in place. Getting those permits from the state of Vermont for water and sewer are already in place, so. But anything's possible if you have the resources.
The will, the money and the resources.
All right, well, we can, for next month, I mean, we could go through it and.
I think it's, that's what it's going to come down to.
A lot, some more time for editing and adjusting some of the language and, you know, look at, could we, I think that's a good thing to do is to really specify, maybe even separate, this is what a small division is, small subdivision, and this is a major subdivision. These are the qualifying and disqualifying factors and, you know, that way it's, it's a lot more apparent and, and specified.
Right.
You know, we, we start with Article One, the purpose. I don't think anybody's going to feel that the goals, the, the, the goal stated in the purpose is an overreach.
No, no, I agree.
But we'll still go through them.
Yep, no. And then we could also, at the same time, kind of look at different, I have them, different building permits.
Yes.
I mean, they're not that hard to develop.
It's going to take a while.
Right, but I mean, that's like a one-page.
Yeah.
You're not like, it's not like subdivision regs or zoning. Just look at different towns and see what they do and take what we like and. Okay, so is everybody all right with that? Just kind of go over it next month and see where we are? Okay, great.
And anybody in the public who wants to come and join the discussion should come.
Yes.
Please come and join the discussion, so.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, we'll go on to Item Seven, Discussion on Affordable Housing Study. Jason was going to get us a desktop view of suitable properties just based on, you know, access, environmental stuff. And then I think our next step, we should put the pen to paper on these plans, like what properties?
Is he going to give it to us on like a three-by-five?
Well, it'll be, we could print it out, whatever. But I mean, at this point, though, I think if we identify them, and then we need to write letters to the landowners and say, hey.
See what interest they have.
Yeah, you know, kind of, you know, maybe just describe what we're doing and all that. And if they're not interested, it ends right there.
Well, Don Mealy's house is now on the market. That's the one right there next to the firehouse.
Oh, to the left?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I sold mine.
Did you?
Yeah, last Sunday. It's under contract.
Good.
All right.
And then the house across the street that the, those young, the young people used? Is that, that's on the market? Is it?
Yes, I believe it is, yeah.
Still available? It looks pretty big. I haven't been inside.
There's three units right here in the east area sale. It's interesting.
Yeah.
So I mean, I kind of think that's where we're at. Need to kind of start, then, once, if we get any positive feedback, then we go to the Select Board, or Jason, they'll, they'll come in. Montescutti Regional Commission will come in. So I don't know, just step by step.
So do we just have to come up with a number closer to twenty if we can? Is that it for somebody to be interested in coming this way?
I think it's, I don't know, all in one.
Not in, not in one building, but.
Twenty total, right?
Twenty total.
Total.
Right.
So that's what, that's the goal now, is to try to come up with a number of places to improve or change?
But I think that's the threshold for like funding, so.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Is that twenty bedrooms or twenty individual units or is it?
I think it's individual units. I mean, after the meeting, Bruce, if you have time, we could just pull out that map and just color code what we think.
Hey, you got it here?
Yeah, I think they're here. I mean, I don't think, we don't need to do it during the meeting.
Okay.
And then that's sort of the next step. And then maybe we can get Jason in next month to kind of go over what they found.
Yeah, there's financial incentives from the state of Vermont. If you construct houses with, that, that will increase density, meaning instead of a duplex, you do a quadplex.
Right.
You know, that they give, of course, the, the funding. This, this is where, if we, if we identify them and we want to go forward with it, we're probably going to have to get the Rockingham Land Trust involved.
Right.
They've got the money. They say, yeah, and then we can discuss, you know, whether it's going to be, what the median, median income will be for people that buy it or buy into it, how much of it will be low, low income, if any? How much of it will be elder housing, if any? You're, you're allowed to do all that.
Right.
Families.
Yeah, I'm assuming Rockingham Community Land Trust or for Montescutti, they'll kind of help us with kind of determining all that.
Yeah, they call them HUDs, planned unit developments.
Planned unit developments, yes.
Betty's itching to do one. She wants to do one somewhere in town.
Yeah, planned unit developments are good. That's basically, I mean, it's part of zoning. I don't know if anybody knows what they are, but if it's like you can increase, if you have zoning, they allow for planned unit developments and you can increase the density in the, for the particular project, if you like cluster things and all that. So you are allowed to, you know, say if we did have zoning, if you wanted to do like a tiny house commune or whatever, that would be like a planned unit development.
And they don't necessarily have to be rental units. They can be condominiums.
Yeah.
People can, people can, can own them and fee simple. And they can have mortgages on them and they can, they have, some of those deals, in order to make it affordable, you, the, the mortgage ends up being less than the comparable square footage would be. But when you sell it, you don't necessarily, if, if you bought it for two hundred thousand and you sell it for three hundred, you don't necessarily get that hundred thousand. You get a portion of it. So you don't necessarily own it in, well, where it is feasible. It's the, the developer or the, the case of Rockingham Land Trust retains a, a, a portion of the ownership. And I'm not, I'm not real wild about that, having the only money I've ever really made, I've made on the selling of property. So I don't, I would hate to have someone come to me and say, well, yeah, you, nice, you made a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the sale, but we're only going to give you forty because the rest of it has to go for building more, more, more houses.
You need to understand that upfront, right?
Oh, yes, yeah. But it enables people to buy, buy property that they normally wouldn't be able to afford. It's, you know, whatever, whatever you build, unless it's, unless it's a truly substandard housing is, what's it, it's up to four hundred dollars a square foot now.
Yeah.
Just normal, normal appliances, normal floors, just run-of-the-mill windows and siding and, you know, the concrete for the foundation, the site work. And of course, better houses far exceed that rate. How, how can the average wagerer in Vermont pay for a building that's cost four hundred dollars a square foot to construct? God, that's.
Wagers haven't kept up.
Twenty years ago, that was like a, not even, that was a luxury square foot cost. Remember, you could build a house for like a hundred and fifty a square foot.
Yep.
Way back. Well, not that long ago. So, all right. So maybe then for next meeting, we can get Jason here to kind of go over, actually, you can even, we can kind of go over the subdivision stuff, too, with him.
Yep.
So.
Yes, do, we'll do both of those.
Okay.
Before we get land trust and things involved.
That's right.
Give us some better guidelines on like, he's, he's well, well schooled in that and I'm, I'm actually not. I know the fundamentals of it, but I don't know the particulars.
Neither, I don't either. Okay. All right, is anything else on Item Seven? Anybody wants to discuss? Okay. Item Eight, Review Correspondence. I didn't get any. I never get any correspondence.
I was going to say, nobody ever writes us anything.
You don't write letters anymore.
I mean, we used to get it all the time. It'd be, like, every month, it'd be like a stack of stuff.
I know.
I don't know. Okay. Any new business, old business? Anybody have anything they want to say? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
That's on the.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Fine.
Okay, motion's passed.